Right, right.
From a different perspective.
Good? Okay, welcome, everybody, to the election town meeting, June 13th election for Rockport Select Board candidates. And we have from six until 7:30, and if we need to go beyond, we'll go beyond if it gets really lively. And questions are welcome. We have paper and writing utensils up here, or for those of you who are watching, send them on in. You can comment if you're watching livestream, or you can shoot a text to me, LyndaClancy7066657. So we'll make sure as many questions get answered as possible. So, thank you very much. Ken McKinley, current chairman of the Rockport Select Board, who is running for a one-year seat and filling out Tom Gray's seat. And then John Alexander, Debra Hall, and Jeff Hamilton, competing for the two empty seats, one vacated by Ken McKinley, the other vacated by Owen Cassas. And our esteemed moderator tonight, as usual, is Dr. Rock Duke. And he is going to keep everybody in line.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to say, this is your job interview. And you have a whole bunch of bosses. In fact, there's probably about 3,500 that are sitting home, hopefully watching this. So, the first thing we've got to do is, when I'm interviewing somebody, I say, "Tell me about yourself." So Jeff, would you please start by telling everyone about yourself?
Two minutes?
If you can, try to keep it to two minutes.
Certainly. Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming out, and thank you for those that are online for watching. I'm Jeff Hamilton, and I'm running for one of the open seats for one of the three-year positions on the Select Board. I'm a Maine native. I grew up in Rumford, Maine, and have moved in and around Maine since. I've lived in Rockport with my wife Diane and our two dogs since about the middle of 2015. I'm a University of Maine Chemical Engineering graduate, and did master's level work at George Washington University in Washington, DC. I held management operations and technical positions in the pulp and paper industry prior to moving to Rockport for about 35 years. Worked in 10 facilities with seven different companies in four different states in the United States. Six of those facilities were in the state of Maine. And as you can imagine, the pulp and paper industry did a significant tumble over the last few years in terms of business, and kind of ran out of options there. I think I ran out of mills to work in. I've worked in primary manufacturing, as I said, most of my career. And it was certainly a difficult business, but that experience has certainly helped me as I prepare for or potentially become a Select Board member here in Rockport. I'm now the plant manager of DuPont, formerly FMC's facility in Rockland, Maine. And in this business, you know, it's all about delivering results through people, providing excellent safety work areas, as well as environmental sustainability. When you are operating a manufacturing business in the United States of America, you must have a laser focus on safety and environmental compliance and sustainability initiatives. The customer focus and the financial performance is certainly core competencies in that as well. Regarding the civic activity area, I'm a member of the Camden Rotary. I'm a member of the Penn Bay Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, and I'm also on the Town's Harbor Committee and have been for just about a year. I'm active on several University of Maine School of Engineering and Accreditation boards. I've been president of both National and International Industry Association organizations through the paper industry, either management or technical. My wife Diane and I enjoy Rockport very much. It's now our home, and our intent is for it to stay that way. Our four grown children have very active lives. They all four have college degrees as of last Friday afternoon. And, you know, they live not only in Maine, but I have, we have one that lives in Africa, in West Africa, one that just returned after an expat assignment in Germany, and now lives in South Carolina, and then our twins live in Bangor. Recently became a member of the Boat Club here in town, and my passions include sailing, skiing, playing guitar, and powerboat racing, which I'm headed out to do tomorrow afternoon. I think I can contribute significantly to the success of this town. You know, it's focused on the future. We all tend to learn from our past, but it's really about what's ahead of us that counts. I'm hopeful that I can act as a responsible Select Board member to help with that, and I ask for your support on the 12th.
Thanks, Jeff. Debra?
Thanks. I'm Debra Hall, and my husband and I have lived in Rockport for over 19 years, sometimes part-time. The best times were, I have been full-time, and of course, we've been full-time here for some time now. I am not a Maine native, but I married one. His family grew up in Melanocke, in the paper mills. And we were both attorneys by training, and we both have worked in the reinsurance industry for a long time, 38 years pretty much for me. And that's where insurance companies insure themselves, with other insurance companies. So what we do now is work for ourselves. We are arbitrators, so we arbitrate disputes between insurance and reinsurance companies when they disagree on how much they owe one another. We, I also have a software technology company that I own with another business partner, and we have a patent that was granted by the United States Patent Office. I have spent a lot of time in my life since, beginning in law school, working in different community structures and organizations. I've been on four different homeowner association boards, ranging in size from 44 homes to over 1,000 homes. I've been a village clerk, elected village clerk in Long Grove, Illinois. I chaired the Design Architectural Standards Committee for Historic Old Town Alexandria, so I've had experience there. My most recent stint was on two HOA boards in Naples that I chaired, and we took them from developer control situation over to homeowner control, and that has its own set of interesting issues. I have been on the, active on the Technology Committee for the last couple of years for the town, mainly because I was coerced by, no, I was solicited by Rick Bates to be on that committee because I had led an effort in Naples to bring fiber optic to 541 homes. And I am very active in the music arena in Rockport, or in the midcoast area, and I'm a member and president of the Board of the Penobscap Bay Ringers. And we raise a lot of money for charities. We've raised in the last 10 years, we've raised over $25,000 for charities like Hospitality House, Food Pantries, and on and on. So I would be happy to serve the town on the Select Board. I have skills that I think are important, that could be very helpful to the Board, and I have spent a long time representing other people, and that's one of my passions.
John?
This is John Alexander. As you'll guess, I'm not a native of Maine. I was born in the East End of London, and came to America because my wife Laurie captured me, took me prisoner. But I have a very diverse background. I was arrested when I was 16 for street trading without a license, selling scarves at Christmas in Oxford Street. Wasn't serious, but you did what you could to earn money. I also ran overland trips to Africa, India, and Kathmandu in Nepal, where I lived a couple of times for a couple of years. And then by chance met some people and became a management consultant, of all things, where we taught creative problem-solving, communication skills, and teamwork. In fact, I was a facilitator before anybody really knew what that was. We used to put video cameras in rooms and watch people working on problems, and then deconstruct those videos with them to find out what worked and what didn't. I've lived in Rockport for 25 years or more, and became an American citizen soon after 9/11, where, you know, I felt that America was my home, and it was my way of standing strong with America. Laurie and I moved to the USA, or Laurie moved back home. We met in Amsterdam, Holland, and of course, I came with her. And we traveled all over the country in an RV, looking for a place to live. And we came to Rockport one sunny fall day, and I stood up on top of Mount Batty, like many others before me, looked down over the harbor, and said, "This looks like home." I wanted to live in a small town where people knew my name, where I could go into a restaurant and say, "I've come without my wallet." And they would say, "It's okay, John, pay us later," and that has happened to me a couple of times. I've been on the Rockport Planning Board for eight years. I've been the chair, I think, for the last six years. And I'm inspired to run for the Select Board by the many people who have come before me and the volunteers that I see around town, people that give their life and time and commitment to helping us to keep the town the wonderful community that I think it is. I'm mostly retired. I still have, I have some real estate, but not in Rockport, in Rockland and Belfast. So I have the time, and I think that my general background and life experience and perspectives from my work and travel will bring a diversity and certainly a difference of opinion to the Planning Board. I'm not always easy to get along with. I can be difficult sometimes, but I'm a good listener and hope that if I am elected, while we may not always agree, I will listen carefully to what people are saying.
Thanks, John. Even though many of you know Ken, you have the same two minutes.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. My name is Ken McKinley. I've lived in Rockport since 1991. Raised my two kids here. They both went through the school system from start to finish. Both are now successful, one in New York City and one in Providence, Rhode Island, and my wife and I are very proud of them. I run a weather forecasting business. I'm a meteorological consultant. I've been doing that since I got here in 1991. Most of my clients are ocean-going yachts, but also some other concerns. Anybody who has a need for weather forecasting services to help them make decisions. And that's what I tell people. It's not about the weather forecast, it's about helping to make good decisions. And so in that line, with all my clients that I speak to, I find out what their needs are first, and then work with them to determine what do they need to know about the weather that's going to help to make them make good decisions. I've been serving on the Select Board for the last six years. It has been a learning process from start to finish. I'm still learning, and I continue to learn with time if I'm lucky enough to be re-elected for another year. And that's who I am.
Thanks, Ken. Okay, I'm going to start reading some questions from the audience. The first question, I'm going to go backwards, and so we'll start with Ken this time. What vision do you have for the former RES site on West Street?
For me, it's a wonderful site for Rockport. It's what I like to call the gateway to Rockport. Most people who come into the midcoast are coming in on Route 90, and they're going to see it right in front of them. My vision is a mixed-use type of situation, and I don't know what all the mixed uses would be just yet, but I would like to see some sort of retail there, perhaps some service businesses, and maybe some residences as well. I do want to maintain some green space there. The playing fields that the town was, were given to the town for that purpose a long time ago, I think still have that use in it. As I said, the gateway to the town, and I think having that gateway to the town being green space is something that we really would strive for. One of the things that I would like to do with that site is master plan, and that is work over the next couple of years in really getting a plan developed for how do we want this site to look in 10, 15, 20 years, so that it's developed carefully and with some vision, rather than helter-skelter, having somebody come along and say, "Well, I'm going to put something here, I'm going to put something over here." So I think that site has a lot of possibilities for the town. It could really enhance the town very well, and like I say, a mixed-use situation would be what I would like to see there.
Okay, John?
I think probably not too dissimilar from Ken. I would like to see the field stay as it is. I think it's good space for the town, and keep it as a ball field and other uses. Where the old school was, again, I would like to see that developed with retail, offices, and also apartments. I think that would be an excellent use of that particular space.
Okay, Debra?
I agree with both Ken and John. I remember being at a planning, or me at a Select Board meeting not that long ago, where they had some other planners who talked about that space. And there were some really, really interesting uses, which included residential and some retail. And it's certainly a very important space, and I agree with Ken, it really needs to be done thoughtfully, so that we do develop it in a really intentional way. I would like to see retail so that we can add to, and expand our tax base, and help with our financial situation.
Okay, Jeff?
You know, the question was, what is my vision? I think the right question is, what is the desire of the taxpayers and residents of Rockport for that site? And, you know, that can come through surveys, some input, and certainly listening to the people that have to drive by it every day. I would offer, though, that its best use could be something, that should be something that generates tax dollars. And how that looks and what businesses are on there, or what structures are on there, really is up in the air. I don't have a set direction for that. It's what do the people want?
Okay. Let me throw a curveball at you. It comes in November, I believe, the town will vote on the approval of the library construction. Am I right, Ken? Fill me in.
That's the plan.
Okay.
We're working toward that.
And if you folks say that's what you want to, you want to carry through what the people want, what if the construction project is voted down? What would you do as a Select Board member? No, stop. Let's go back to Jeff. We'll go back and forth.
Okay.
What would happen if the voters voted down, which is a possibility?
I got the big question, didn't I?
Well, you're all going to hit it, so...
Yep. All right. You know, as I understand it, a proposal will go in front of the town in November against, on that library. If it is voted down, we're, the answer, or the question needs to be why? And was it money? Is it design? Is it location? Hopefully, the input of the Board, or the Board will get the input on that activity long before the vote, so that, you know, this doesn't go to the same point it has gone multiple times. I would offer that we find out why as a Select Board, and get the input, and send it back to the committees and the Board itself, say, "What's next?"
Okay. All right. Debra?
I'm not sure what else you can do. You know, you obviously have to step back and try to figure out why it was voted down. Certainly, the survey that's been done, you know, previously, certainly gave us a lot of input in terms of what the town is thinking, and certainly, you know, cost was a factor, design was a factor. We all know that the town is very evenly split with respect to the location. But I do think that, given that situation, you really would have to assess why it was voted down and try to proceed from there.
Okay. John?
Well, the role of the Select Board, according to our charter, is to execute the will of the people, to manage town affairs, and to provide leadership and oversight on issues of importance to the town. So, yes, the will of the people has to be respected, but where there's differences of view and not really a majority view, then we have to provide some kind of leadership and inspiration. Now, I've always thought that the catalog for the library should be integrated into Camden and Rockland. I do think the library should stay where it is, and I think the size should stay as it is, and it should become a children's library, and more of a center where services and programs are provided to young people. And if it was voted down, I would be promoting that as a view. Let's integrate the catalog. We have perfectly good libraries in the two towns next to us, but we should keep the library specialized. And although you haven't answered, asked the question yet, it would go hand-in-hand with creating broadband for the entire community, and it would be centered there, I think. So my vision, if it is voted down, would be for it to remain the same footprint, a much reduced cost, but kept specialized for, as a children's library and young people's center.
Okay. Want to weigh in?
Let me say, first of all, that we are working very hard to put forth a proposal as a Select Board in a leadership role, to put forth a proposal that we think the town will support. And that has been a process that has taken an awfully long time. Almost the entire time I've been on the Select Board, we've been dealing with this issue. So I'm hopeful that what we put before the voters will pass, and it has included some compromises we've gone along, some things that I particularly may not care for, and some things that others may not care for that I promote. So I'm hopeful that this time around, that we'll have a successful vote after having gathered the survey information and having gone through several iterations. If it is voted down, we do have to try to find out why, and that's a difficult thing to do. We've had a survey this time, and we think we have a better handle on where the people are as far as cost and location, even though that's fairly evenly split. But we would have to try to find out why. I'm going to disagree with John a little bit, in that I think that the town wants a library, and that was one of the strongest questions we had on the survey, is we asked people, how much do you, how many of you agree with the statement that the Rockport Public Library is an integral part of the town of Rockport? And I may have the wording of that question wrong, but the general idea is right. And 74% agreed with that. And I've said all along, I'm working for those 74% who really think the library is important. So if it's voted down, the Select Board's going to have to put our heads back together and go back to the drawing board and come up with something else, because I, for one, don't want to see the library go away. I want to see it remain as it is. It's well-used, it's used by adults and children, and I would like to see it continue. Maybe it has to continue in a different form, or a smaller size, or whatever it might be. But for now, I'm going to be optimistic and say that we've done an awful lot of hard work, the whole town has, on this issue over the last several years, and that when we vote in November, that we'll be able to move forward in a positive way.
Okay, thank you. We'll change gears a little bit from the audience. The question, this would start with you, Ken. What parts of the comprehensive plan do you think need to be revised, and how?
Well, I don't have the plan right in front of me. One of the things I've noticed with the plan, and I've heard comments from several people, and I've read it myself, is that the last time it was done, and it was done by Rockport citizens the last time around, it was very well-done. We've had other towns around, including Camden, who just redid their comprehensive plan, take a look at ours and say, "You know what? We want to do what Rockport did." We've just had a committee finish up their first year of work at looking it over, and taking a look at it, and really just kind of freshening it up. We do have to look at some things that have changed since the comprehensive plan was first written. And one of the things that comes immediately to mind is when that plan was written, we had a school on that property over at the RES site. We don't anymore. The schools are in different places. So we have to do a little bit of changing around there, and things like that. But my opinion is that the comprehensive plan itself is a fairly solid document, and that the changes that we'll make are probably going to be more updates than changes. I don't see any wholesale changes needed in the tone of the document or anything like that. So mostly a freshening up sort of situation.
Okay, John?
I have a, I did look at the goals and priorities in the comprehensive plan, and if you'll just bear with me for a minute, I'll just give a few brief points. Preservation of the aesthetics of Rockport, mitigation of increased costs of town government, better access to coastal waterfunds, protection of Rockport's natural resources, mix of business and nonprofit activities, better transportation planning, a welcoming town government, and promotion of community vitality and health. They're just bullet points. And I think that the town has done very well in pursuing those goals to different degrees. And I think they're worthwhile goals. They're worth taking another look at and reevaluating, how far along are we in achieving those goals, and what more needs to be done, so...
All right, thanks, John. Debra?
I have watched some of the work of the comprehensive, the ad hoc comprehensive plan group and on livestream, and they're doing a very good job. And I know that we're poised to have a, you know, a comprehensive plan committee and effort going forward. I think that one thing that we haven't really pursued in the comprehensive, the 2004 comprehensive plan sufficiently, and I don't, I didn't see the livestream in which this was addressed by the committee, but, and that is economic development. I think that there had been a recommendation that there be an Economic Development Committee be established, and I believe that one has not been established. And I would really like to see that. I think that we need to pay attention to our businesses, what they need, how the town can get out of their way, if there's something that we're doing to, you know, impede them. I think we really need to listen to business owners and think about how we can improve the business community. Another thing is, they recommended some things for efficiencies in government, and I think that we can do a lot more with respect to that topic. One of the things that I would like to revisit, or visit perhaps, is the topic of seniors and young people, and getting both, and getting young people involved more in the community, but also seniors. One of the interesting meetings I went to recently was an AARP network meeting. Apparently, the AARP has this network of aging, of age-friendly communities, and they had a first inaugural meeting a couple weeks ago at Sea Folk. And I guess there's 52 communities in the state of Maine that have addressed the concerns of seniors, and the one county where that hasn't happened is in Knox County. So, and some of those needs can be putting a bench out in front of the grocery store so that the people who've just bought money and are waiting for a ride have a place to sit. It doesn't have to be necessarily, you know, something costly. And as I understand, it doesn't cost anything for the town to become one of these age-friendly communities. And just a little plug for that group, they're meeting on Election Day, again at Sea Folk at 8:00 AM, and you might be interested in going and talking to them.
All right, thank you, Debra. Jeff?
I think if you look around the state of Maine, and you look at the towns that developed a very good comprehensive plan, that's been fresh, recent, and certainly reflects the times, you will see towns that line up behind that comprehensive plan and execute on it, and things happen. Our plan is quite, I won't say dated, but it was, the document itself is dated 14 years ago. And the, you know, say, "What's changed in 14 years in the world?" Say nothing about just in Rockport. Each of the folks to my right make excellent points. Needs to be freshened up, so it's just a review. Is this still good or not? The goals that Mr. Alexander read through are very good goals. I wouldn't see a change in the overall objective of the plan and the items that it addresses. I would agree with Debra that an economic component of that needs to be very, very well-thought-out and driven. Once we get some of the things that are currently on the plate behind us, this could be the guiding document, combined with the town charter, that allows us to move the entire town forward, and use that as the comprehensive plan, in particular, as what are we going to do next?
Okay, thank you. And one of my questions I have is, have you observed a Select Board meeting, or numerous ones? And how would you improve the Board's function, both in meeting and how they interact? Jeff, you go first.
This is right up my, my...
Softball.
It's where it is. I have watched several Select Board meetings online, and I was at the Select Board meeting earlier this week. I was the last person in the audience. And that particular meeting, I thought... And that particular meeting, I thought, compared to others, went quite well. A lot of agenda items were covered. We covered tons of stuff. Decisions were made. Things went quite well. The key around good meetings, whether it's select board or any other board-type meeting, a group meeting, is to make sure that the objective of the meeting is clearly stated, that there's an agenda, that the material's been sent out ahead of time, people come prepared, conversations are structured, they don't go on and on and on forever. Strong facilitation is required, as Ken knows very well. The, the, those are the types of things that will get stuff done. Good communication protocol. You know, when we watch meetings occur, whether it's select board or any others, oftentimes as you watch people talk, they will already have come to their conclusion, or the decision will already be made, but they keep on talking. And, you know, it takes a good facilitator and good behaviors within the select board as members to say, okay, we've, you know, I proposed that, we X, Y, Z. Does anybody have any objections? Or is there anybody not in alignment? And that allows the conversation to go much more quickly, decisions to be made very rapidly, and you go on to the next thing. You know, I'm, I will be the first person, and my wife will be probably even earlier than that, that I am all about business. I mean, it's boom, 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 boom. Now, you have to balance that with what are the needs of the people, because you can't, you can't drive the decisions. Sometimes things take some time for the right answer to come, even though you'd like to hop on that initial response on day one. Sometimes it takes a little bit longer. So it's a balance on how you make that happen.
All right, thank you very much. Deborah?
I agree with Jeff, and we both obviously come from a business environment, and given that, we were used to business and very business-like meetings. They have to be focused. You need to, you certainly need to listen to people. You need to consider all views, but then you need to move ahead and make decisions. The meeting needs to be focused. I think there is a lot of time that's added to the meetings that probably doesn't need to be. One of the things that I have always had concerns about when I have attended select board meetings, and so therefore I tend to prefer seeing them on livestream, is that a lot of things that really could just be read, they're in the manager's report. If they don't need action, let's not talk about them. Unless somebody from the audience or somebody from the board has an issue to raise and something is controversial, let's get it done. Let's not talk about them. This is why you have the materials in advance. This is why the public should certainly be interested, you know, and have, you know, access to the materials in advance. Those are the kinds of things that I think could really be done to improve the select board's operation. And I have to give a lot of credit to the current select board, because they have improved a lot this past year from the prior select board. But there's room for more improvement. And all that said, you know, everybody's a Monday morning quarterback, right? But I think that, that improvement is, we're on the cusp of more improvement, and I look forward to doing that.
There are no accolades, only public service in the seat that you are about to jump until. John?
Well, it's a very interesting question, actually. I'm not going to criticize the current select board or the previous ones. And yes, I have attended select board meetings and watched them on video. On the planning board, I, at the end of the meeting, we would end the formal meeting, and we would have a 15-minute session where we talked about the process of the meeting, what went well, what, how did we work together, and what are the problems or concerns? And that gave us an opportunity as a team to figure out how we communicate effectively with each other in a meeting while still each maintaining our point of view, because the boards are a board of equals. Even though there's a chair, we are equals. And I was very disappointed to, about six or seven months ago, to find out that what I was doing was illegal because of the sunshine laws, that all meetings of the planning board and the select board have to be in public. And I had to stop doing, I had to stop having those feedback sessions. They had a big impact on, I believe, the quality of the way the planning board worked together. And that's a shame to me. You can't air your dirty linen in public. If I have a dispute with Ken as chair, I don't, he's cut me off, or something bad happened, I don't want to discuss that in public. We need to do it as a group privately. So if there was an improvement that I would be allowed to make, if we could somehow find a way around the rules that govern us, it would be to allow a body such as the select board to have a meeting where the subject is the discussion of the process that's used, not the content. So I'm not sure I would be allowed to do it there, because there are rules that govern us. The other thing is that I find this formality gets in the way of conversation sometimes. I would, it's designed like a law court. You know, we're sitting on a raised dais, speaking down to people, and I always find that somewhat objectionable. I've done what I can on the planning board to make our meetings more of a conversation and informal, but it's hard to get around this. If I could change, the second thing, it would be to get rid of this and put us on the same level as the residents that come to join in our meetings and make it a conversation.
Having known you a long time, Ken, I bet you can look in the mirror and say, I can improve.
Oh, you can always improve. I haven't watched any of the select board meetings on livestream, but I have attended a few over the past few years. And I want to address a few points that were brought up. The difference between the select board and a business meeting, because of the FOAA law, we select board members cannot talk in groups of more than two in between meetings. Our conversation about issues has to happen in a public view. And so, yes, that means that discussions are perhaps going to take a little bit longer than a business meeting where everybody's able to prepare and come to the table and say, well, here's my point A, my point B, my point C. Okay, let's make the decision and move on. I say, I say this frequently, it's like making the sausage. Sometimes you don't like to watch the process of making the sausage, but you like the outcome. So that's one way that we have to make sure on a board of five, and as John said, it's a board of equals. The chair runs the meeting, but has no more power than any other board member. The board acts as a whole, not as individuals. The chair has to make sure that all points of view are able to be heard, and if that means that some other member has to have a little more time to say something, then that has to be what happens. Now, I do agree that at some point, we start hearing the same points over and over again. That's when it's time to say, okay, I don't think we have anything more to gain by further discussion. Let's move on, and let's, let's get the question posed, and if the motion doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. Not everything has to pass by unanimous vote. That's, that's the way we are. That's the kind of government we have. As I said, the public discussion has, discussion has to be in public. Regarding the manager's report, I heard a comment about that, and we did it differently in the last meeting. And the reason we did it was because the manager's report was published in the local newspaper. That's the first time that's happened. It has happened for other towns. I've always taken the point of view that the manager's report is not only the manager's report to the board, but it's the manager's report to the whole town. And while the board may be familiar with some of the items that are on that report, some of the people sitting in the audience, or some of the people watching on the livestream may not be. They may not know that, hey, next week, we're going to be closing this bridge out here in the far part of West Rockport to do a repair on it. So that information, while it may seem not that important at the time, it may be important to somebody in town. What we did at the last meeting, which was my suggestion, was to say to the manager, we all had the report, we had it available for people who were here, it was more widely available in the community, and then we had a good discussion about several points in the report that a few audience members or board members had questions about, and the manager had some points that he wanted to hit a little bit harder. So I think we can move forward with that way, but we can't dismiss that completely, because it is important as a report, like I say, not only to the board, but to the whole town. And to return to Bob's comment, yeah, I can look in the mirror, I can always be better.
I know you can.
I hope.
Okay. Okay. This is going to be tough for you, because you've been doing this thing for a while. What initiatives would you bring forward, shall you be elected?
Well, I do think that master plan for the RES site, it's time for that. If we can settle the library issue, and I brought this up several years ago, when we had the first vote on the library issue, and the townspeople at that time said that they were not interested in the RES site, I brought it up, said, okay, let's master plan that site, because it is such an important site for the town. Once we can settle, if we do our job and we get a good proposal in front of the voters for the library, I think that the master planning of that site is a key initiative that I'd like to see brought forward.
Okay, John?
Well, I certainly agree. The library should be settled one way or another, but I would like to get the discussion of broadband back on the agenda. I was very disappointed that it wasn't pursued last time we discussed that. I don't think it was, the benefits were completely understood by everybody. For whatever reason, I would like that discussion to take place again. And then the other thing is, although I believe it's happening now, is I would like to hear from citizens on the achievement of these goals that were set out. I'd like to get some very specific feedback on each of the goals from as many people as possible. How are we doing? Let's take stock with that and feed that into a revision of the plan, although I believe it's all under discussion now. But those, I think those are important, two important, three important things for us to take care of.
Okay, John. Deborah?
I agree that it's time to be looking at an RES master plan. Totally agree with Ken on that. I mentioned before that I think that economic development is very important, and I really would like to see us pursue economic development in a very intentional way. Third, I do agree with John about broadband. I, I would say that the town took a real leadership role on fiber optic in the state, but it, it was done, maybe it wasn't done in hindsight, in, I guess, in the right way, because I think it wasn't led by the people and the needs of the people. People need to, need to feel that they have a need for it, and I think that that discussion just wasn't there. And so, but my, my point about broadband is that I think that the town needs to look at it, but, here is the big but. When we did it previously, as I said, when I led an effort in that respect, we actually found with 541 homes that the cost of internet and TV went down. Went down, okay? Didn't go up a penny. It went down. And to the extent, as things have developed over time, it's a good thing we didn't do it a couple of years. As time has gone by, more opportunities become available, grants become available. The Rockefeller Foundation is working on something that's very exciting now, in the state of Maine, funding. And so if it can be done in a way that it actually, that it actually doesn't cost us money or costs us less, then I think it's something that is worth taking a look at. But it's not something that, you know, we want to, I'm fiscally conservative. I don't want to go out there and say, hey, we ought to look at broadband and increase everybody's taxes as a result. That is not what I am saying at all. But it can help in terms of seniors and telehealth, it can help in terms of kids and education, it can help in terms of economic development for the community. It has the potential for that, but at what cost? And I think that is, you know, a very important aspect of it. And lastly, I would say, I would like to, I would like to see the town, once again, perhaps consider this AARP network of communities. It's really volunteers, but here's what it does for the town. They actually survey all of the town's residents to see what the, what seniors in town are having difficulty with. It doesn't cost anything, as I understand, to survey the town's residents in that regard. I guess most people come back, especially in the state of Maine, saying transportation is their big issue. I know that the town has addressed transportation issues in the past, but I would like to see us give, again, some thoughtful consideration to what are the needs of our seniors and what are, you know, what are some of the possibilities with respect to transportation if that is seen as a big need.
I will interject that with the, with respect to being elderly-friendly town, when we did work on a master plan for the RES site, yes, it was done, and it was all scrapped, folks, it was put on the shelf, that one of the crazy ideas that came up was an elderly activity center for RES. So think about that in the future. Jeff, go ahead.
All right. The question, again, was what initiatives would I certainly bring energy to and support in the, in the town? The comprehensive plan review, and in particular, the economic plan and economic development plan behind that, I would be very energized about. Secondly, expanding and engaging, expanding the engagement of and engaging residents throughout Rockport, and that goes all the way from Clam Cove and the Sammaset, all the way out here towards Simonton Corner and all points in between, I think would be something that I would very much like to become a part of. There are a lot of people in Rockport, and all those people need to be heard from in a format that would add value. Lastly, the infrastructure review and the capital plan review for the town. Again, as we get some of the past issues and items behind us, hopefully in November, we need to focus the energy on what does the town truly need. We've got the three big ones, right? School, public works, and our emergency management, our emergency responders, police, fire. Those are the big things that the town needs to support, financially for sure, and a lot of activity goes behind that. But when we start talking about what are the needs of the town in terms of our sewer systems, our water systems, our roads, those are things that we've got to close the gaps on very quickly. And it's not in any one particular part of town, it's the entire, you know, border and everything in between it in Rockport.
Thank you. We're about halfway through this event. Does anybody from the audience have a question? And if you do, just raise your hand and come up to the mic and ask away, okay? We can keep going. Between Linda and I, we have plenty of questions. Are you familiar with, and if so, do you support the Camden-Rockport Pathway Committee's goal of connecting the neighborhoods and town with pathways as an alternative transportation Let's go with Ken first.
I am familiar with the Pathways Committee's initiatives and their goals. I served as a liaison to that committee for the first few years I was on the board. That committee is a very energetic committee, does a lot of work, has accomplished a good deal over the last few years. And yes, I would like to see more pathways. And a pathway, by the way, the definition of a pathway is a way that can be used not only for pedestrians, but also for bicycles. One of the Pathways Committee's goals is to get a path out along Route 90 to connect the center of Rockport to the schools out there, perhaps at some point all the way to West Rockport. And I think having a pathway like that along there would be terrific. Those who have driven along Route 1 in Brunswick, you can see the pathway along there. That pathway is well-used down there, and I think we would see a similar thing here in Rockport. The pathway that runs along Union Street from the center of Rockport, well, basically from the Fish Shack, down past the Y and into Camden, is used quite a bit. And one of the reasons I know that is that the proprietor of the Fish Shack, they had a situation once where they had somebody who was doing some vandalism to their property, and they had video cameras on there, and they had to review the video footage over a long period of time. And he said, you would, people are using that pathway at all hours of the day and the night, so it's well-used. So if we build these pathways, I think people will use them. Talking about seniors and things like that, we've talked about how walkable the town is, and that is a score that ends up being really important for that. And the more walkable the town is, the better off we're going to be in a lot of respects. It also draws people to town as far as coming in to look at the businesses. If they know that they can use a pathway to get someplace or ride a bike someplace, they're going to be much more inclined to do it. One of the things we were able to do in the last year is to get the, when the state came in and redid the traffic signal at Route 1 and Route 90, we were able at that time to get the state to put in a pedestrian crossing signal. All we had to do was put the landings in on either side, so that's almost the first All we had to do was put the landings in on either side, so that's almost the first link in that Route 90 pathway, is that getting across Route 1. That's one of the biggest grapes we hear about people who want to walk places in Rockport. Well, how the heck am I gonna get across Route 1? Now, I've got a place to do that. So, yes, I do support what the Pathways Committee is doing, and I support their goals.
Okay, John?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, Deborah?
I support the goals, but of course, the issue is at what cost? And being fiscally conservative, I have to really take a look at the numbers. You know, there was a lot of discussion. I watched all of the budget meetings and select board meetings, and as you know, there were days of them. And I was just telling Heaven and Helen, I feel like I know them very well, even though I'd never met them until tonight. But I think that, I agree with some of the select board members, like Doug Nowell, that there's a lot of, and Mark, that there's a lot of maintenance that needs to be done to the sidewalks we have. And I know there's been some attention placed on that in the budget this year. So, yes, in concept, question is, at what cost? And that just needs further study.
Okay, Jeff?
I am not directly familiar with the initiative as proposed. There are, certainly, if you look at some of the towns that have done it and done it well, it appears to have added value. I would be most concerned in any initiative like that around the safety of the people that are doing the walking and the people that are doing the bike-riding, and certainly, how much impact those types of things would have on the folks that are driving vehicles. You know, there are some parts of the state where a bicycle lane in any route is between two vehicle traffic lanes, and that always scares me. And I just do not feel comfortable on those roads. I would feel terrible if I pinged somebody on a bike due to a poor design from a access route. So, again, I'm not familiar with it, but I do know what my watch-outs would be in the event I were engaged in the conversation going forward.
Okay. Back to you, Jeff. Several documents of the town listed here from the audience. Have you read these? The town charter, the comprehensive plan, and the current proposed town budget?
Town charter, yes. Right here. It's a good document. The folks that put the work into this, I reviewed this, and the riverbanks, as I call it, are quite well-spelled out. I mean, the role of the select board, the role of the town manager, who can do what, how it can get done, the processes that would allow the management of the town are very well-laid out in here. I noticed that the reference documents and towns came from several, not only local, but also outside of the area, and it went well. On the budget, yes. I've read that one, and it worked well. And I'm sorry, the third one?
Comprehensive plan?
Comp plan, I have not read from head to toe.
There won't be any tests on this. Deborah?
Yes, I've read the town charter. I think the town charter is very well-done. I think that it's interesting that the way it was set up, so the budget committee is sort of a check and balance on the select board. And I know that, certainly from watching the meetings, that that can sometimes be frustrating, but I think it was, it was a good approach. And checks and balances are always good. I know that somebody, I know that some issues came up in the budget committee about, well, you know, that's in accordance with the town charter or not. And I think that's good, that everybody knows about the town charter, and they make a very good effort to, you know, to act consistently with it. The comprehensive plan, I have not read every word of it, but I have certainly read most of it. And the budget, as I said, I have actually seen every single budget meeting and select board meeting and workshop on the budget, and have gone through it with them, only not physically with them.
Okay, John?
Certainly, the charter and comprehensive plan, as part of the planning board, I had to familiarize myself with that. The budget, more recently, I watched some online and then reviewed it on my computer just in the last couple of days. It's dense. I don't completely understand the rationale for, you know, each of the line items and why people arrived at that. It's a dense document, and take some studying. I know, superficially, I know what's there. Don't question me on some of the details, because you'll embarrass me.
Okay.
Unless you want to embarrass me, in which case, I'm not interested in doing that.
Ken?
Yeah, I'm more familiar with the budget than perhaps I'd like to be. Because I've read it all, I've read the last six budgets. And you're right, it is a dense document. There's a lot of good information there, and our town staff does an excellent job of putting that budget together for us to consider as a select board, and allows us to answer the 50,000-foot questions that we have to answer as we go through the process. Comprehensive plan, I can't say that I've read every chapter and verse of the whole thing, but I've read an awful lot of it, and have had to look over it through the years in my role as a liaison to the ordinance review committee, and the comprehensive plan guides that process to some extent. And the town charter, yes. Very familiar with the town charter. And I will say, I'm glad to hear that everybody thinks that it's well-put together, but in my service on the select board, we've had to refer back to the town charter many times. And the town charter almost always gives us the answer if we have a question about how we have to do things. And in particular, when we hired the last town manager, which I'm the only select board member remaining from that process, I believe it was the first time that that process had been used to hire a town manager. And the town charter was very good at guiding us about how to go about that, what the steps we had to take were, and things like that. And so, that, the charter is in good shape. You will find, as we have over the years, as you look at it and deal with it on more of a day-to-day basis, there are a few little tweaks that need to happen here and there, but for the most part, the document is, the structure of it is solid.
This just in, from the audience. I've heard a lot about the elderly in town, but how about, how would you make the town more appealing to young people?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I knew you interrupted, Ken, go ahead.
Go back to Ken and we'll...
I have a tendency to do that from time to time.
Well, I mean, and some of the stuff that we've already talked about, economic development. You know, if we have a master plan for the RES site that includes perhaps some economically-friendly residence locations, as well as some retail, some service business, and a playing field, I think that goes a lot. We need to attract families to town, and some of that has to happen by making housing more affordable. And we've had some proposals to do that. You know, we hear a lot at the select board and within the town office about people who come to town because there's a job offered here, but then they can't afford to bring their family here, and they can't afford to live in Rockport. So, I think we have to pay attention to affordable housing and make sure that we have enough of a stock of that around so that we can attract young people. We have a robust recreation program here that the young people really enjoy. Our library is well-used by young people. We have an excellent children's librarian right now. So, all these pieces are in place for things for young people to do. And of course, we have the harbor, we have hiking trails and things like that. There's a lot for young people to do here. But I think it all comes back in the end to affordable housing.
I wrote down before, it was in response, I think, to something that was said, was the involvement of young people. Creating a, getting their input by visiting the schools and working with small groups of younger people to create some kind of a vision of the future that they would like to see. Because it's very, all very well for us older folks, like me, to have a vision of the future, but we won't be around that long. And in creation, in the creation of that vision, what kind of town would they like to raise their children in? I think it's really important to get that input from them. And affordable housing, that's really difficult. I have rental properties. And, you know, an affordable house will take up, will take no more than one-third of your income. And with the current hourly rates that people get, it's very hard for them to even get a one- or two-bedroom apartment. On the mid-coast, Rockland, Camden, Rockport, and Belfast, it's hard. So, I don't know how we address that, apart from having, increasing the minimum wage and what we do.
Okay, Deborah?
I did reference young people earlier when I first mentioned seniors, but you know, that's a good question. And when we say young people, of course, that covers a wide spectrum. So, I would answer the question different ways, depending on what spectrum we're talking about. But since I'm answering it, I'll try to answer it the way I think it might have been intended, which is, how do we keep some of our young people here? People who are graduating from high school here, people who would like to start a business, people who, you know, young people who would like to make this their home and continue to make it their home, and not move somewhere else. I think there, I think that we need to find that out. I think we need to pay attention to it. I think we need to get young people involved, certainly in the community and certainly in the governance structure. I think there's so many tentacles that that, you know, that flow out from that, whether it's technology, whether it's how we conduct meetings so that they're not during the day, how we do meetings to make them shorter and focused, because people don't have the time to attend a three-hour meeting. There's just so many things that that touches on, but I would very much like to see the town address that.
Okay, Jeff?
The quality of life is here. We have the ocean. We have skiing. We can sail. We've got all the food places we ever wanted to eat. We have the activities, the social activities, and, you know, certainly, community activities, sporting events, et cetera. The community vibe is here. However, the thing that brings young people to any town, and it did it for me when I was in my twenties and thirties so very long ago, is jobs. If you want to bring, as we want to bring, young people to the area, the thing that they're looking for is employment opportunities and excellent employment opportunities. I had a boat in this area in 1987, and I very much wanted to live closer to my boat. I lived an hour and a half away because the jobs weren't here to be able to move here to do it. If you look at the whole state of Maine, it's in the same situation. It's, people move out of state for work and money.
I'm gonna feed off of that question and ask the rest of you, because I sat up there for 12 years. And the public would always come to the select board and want us to fix things. And many times, I would ask myself, is that the function of the select board? So, of the things that you guys talked about tonight, do you think that the select board's role or the town's role is limitless as to changing the demographics of town, involvement with the school? Are there services that maybe the town shouldn't be participating in? You talked about economic development, Deborah. I know the county funds, to a degree, a certain level of economic development, but we have towns like Rockport is involved as an economic development, Camden does. But it's all driven to municipal infrastructure and not for businesses. And as a businessperson, I get offended by the money that's spent on economic development when it's not actually helping private businesses. It's only helping public infrastructure. So, what is the role of the town? Should you guys just take all comers and say, "Sure, we'll, we'll, we'll put that in the budget and we'll fund it"? So, Jeff, what would you do in your case? Because things will happen, stuff will happen.
The town charter pretty well describes what the role of the slug board is and what the role of the town manager is, and the activities of the town. I would refer to that document when things get sticky. People will always want to, and we all do it, right? If there's, if I have a personal agenda item, I want the corner of Road X and Y fixed. They're gonna bring it to whoever will listen. Now, certainly, on a, in a select board, the role of a select board member is to listen, okay? And not make promises that they can't keep. That's, that's critical. Select board member needs to listen and bring the issue in front of the, the select board, if it's appropriate for the select board, or to make sure the town manager has awareness. That's the role. You can't make everybody happy all the time. We don't have limited-list funds. And certainly, you know, there have to be doers in this stuff, you know, people that will get things done in order to make it happen. So, that's my cut on that question.
Deborah, what's your thoughts?
Yeah, and again, being fiscally conservative, I am not one that thinks that the town is the answer, you know, municipality is the answer to all things, nor, you know, nor should it be. I think that a lot of it just goes back to the economic development that I've mentioned several times. I think that, you know, I know some of the select board candidates last year, I think it was Doug Cole, said, "I'd like to have a Saturday where we bring in a lot of the business community and ask them, you know, what are we doing right, what are we doing wrong, what could we be doing to help them?" And, you know, understandably, that just hasn't happened yet. I think it was a great idea, but I think that that business community, we should also be doing something similar with respect to young people. You know, what can we do? And again, it may not be something the town as a municipality does, but it's an awareness. It starts with an awareness first. And in it, to some degree, as I said, it might relate to technology. And again, I don't want to beat that drum that we just, you know, increase technology and the taxpayers have to pay for crazy amounts of money or anything. That is not where I'm coming from whatsoever. But that, but those are all discussions that I think need to be had. And some of those, some of those things are extremely important to keeping young people here.
Okay, John?
I'm gonna ask you to ask the question again in a second, but first, I want to respond to something that you said. And that was, as a businessman, you are alarmed at some of the expenditures that the town undertakes.
Well, I'm involved with county government now, not in town government so much. They ask me to moderate occasionally, but in county government, there is a move afoot to have more regional economic development at the county level rather than the town level. Now, some, some of the towns like Camden, I think Rockport to a degree, Rockland has their own economic development person, Thomaston. If you look at those towns, there has been no effort, any activity that has actually helped private business. It has been to foster public infrastructure projects.
So, your question...
For grants and things like that. So, my question, my question is, should, like, for instance, should the town of Rockport really, truly have an economic development department? Or is there other functions within the town that Rockport should say, "That's not our role"?
All right. Okay, so...
Different way to answer the question.
Okay, yeah. So, I used to own McGunter-Cook Campground and Camden Hills V Resort up until about 12 years ago, I think. And I was alarmed when the state spent a million dollars on a bathroom. I redid our bathrooms at the campgrounds for a whole lot less. And I have a big problem with, you know, big edifices built by cities and towns. Now, I don't really know what economic development is. I mean, other than, I guess we have to create the environment and the space for individual entrepreneurs and businesses to be able to create value-added services and products and employment. And if that's economic development, then yes, we should do it by getting out of the way and creating rules and regulations that people can live with that make sense. I think that the role of the select board is to influence and to create that kind of environment where people can function and do the things that they do best. And I don't think that, I think we do have to look after the infrastructure. That's really important to me. I think that governments can, whether it's a small town or national government, we have to take on the work that is too big for individuals to take on. That goes beyond what they're interested in doing. We have to take into account the needs of the vast majority of citizens. So, it's about the creation of an environment where people can do what they do best.
Have anything to say about that, Ken?
A little bit. Economic development, to me, is about creating a place for people to, I mean, we can't, we can't go out and open up a business. We can't drum up a business, things of that nature. But we can create the environment... But we can create the environment where it's more likely that a business may locate here than someplace else down the road. And a couple of the things that we can do that with, we have some tools. We have tax increment financing districts where we can, if more development has come along, then the tax increment goes off into a fund that can then be used to pay for improvements and things of that nature. We have a TIF district out on Route One, which is for the sewer right now. And for all of you, you know, you will learn more about the sewer than you ever want to know when you sit in these seats because you are the sewer commissioners or the politically correct wastewater commissioners. And, and the board, the wastewater commissioners board has done a good job over the past handful of years about putting money away for expenses that we know are coming up for the wastewater system. The wastewater system, for those who don't know, is funded totally by the wastewater users. There are no taxpayer dollars used for that. And we are looking and we have plans, at least preliminary plans available to extend sewer along parts of Route One between where it ends near, fresh off the farm and where it resumes down again by the hospital. There's a lot of parcels down there that are available for sale. The businesses could come in and some businesses, some larger businesses may need that sewer, that sewer service. So that's one thing. I want to talk too about broadband because I know Deb has brought it up and it's been brought up a few times, because that's an infrastructure piece that, that could really be a key toward bringing businesses to Rockport if they have that connection. There are a lot of businesses now that need that really high-speed connection, not just the five megs that you can get off of your cable system or something like that. People that need, you know, several hundred megs or a gigabyte service or something of that nature. We had an initiative a few years ago, Deb was involved in that, about trying to get that going. And the select board at the time with that was very insistent that if we had a plan for broadband, that it would be for the entire town, that not just, not just certain areas of town, because if there was gonna be an expense paid for it, then we wanted to make sure that the people on the periphery of town had as much of an opportunity to get in on that. And I think that's very important. The other thing that, as we know, that, that initiative was voted down by the townspeople and that put us behind from being on the cusp of things perhaps, but on the other hand, I think a lot has happened in the last few years that now we could do it again and probably do it for a lot less. I think we really have to recognize that broadband internet is going to be really a necessary public utility, just like electricity, just like water service, telephone service. That's available, water, electricity and telephone are available to everybody in town. And I think we have to get to the point where the broadband is gonna be available. Other towns around the country are doing it. The difficult part here is that the population density is not such that private business will come in and do it because they're just not gonna get the return on investment that they will for doing a dense urban block where they can get just as many customers as they can get over a whole rural town such as we are. So again, I think listening to businesses, seeing what they need. And let me go back to tax increment financing districts for a minute because there are some sections of the TIF law where towns, if they want to, can actually give a rebate back to a business. I'm not in favor of those at all. I'm in favor of using that TIF money to improve infrastructure to help a business or, and help the surrounding areas as well. We have a downtown TIF here, and if the proposal to build a hotel, which has been floated over the past couple of years, comes along, then that will put an awful lot of money into that downtown TIF, which may allow us to improve sidewalks, perhaps improve the parking on the other side of, of Central Street here, maybe do other things like even bury utility lines. All that's very expensive, but that's what that TIF money is for. So I've rambled on enough, I guess.
Okay. All right. In the next couple of years, either the present select board will re-sign a contract with our town manager, or that town manager may move on and the next board may be looking for a new town manager. So what I'd like to know is, what would you like to see in the next new town manager of Rockport in terms of their qualities? Go ahead, Ken, you start, start the ball off, and hopefully nobody will mimic you.
Well, we'll see. Well, I was involved in the hiring of the last town manager, and, and for me, what I'm looking for is, is a broad experience. Doesn't necessarily have to be a long experience of decades or something like that, but because the town manager and the select board by extension has to have their hands into so many different things, whether it's wastewater, whether it's fire and police, public safety, emergency management preparedness, public works, there's an awful lot that the town manager has to do. So I'm looking for a broad experience there, and in particular, managing people, because it's all about managing the town staff. The town will, staff will perform well for somebody that they respect, even if they don't always agree with a particular man or woman all the time. They'll, if the, if the town manager conducts themselves well and fairly all through that, then that's gonna be a good thing. So that's what I'm looking for, is, is a broad experience and people managing skills.
Okay, John?
I've been on the receiving end of services from the town office, and it seems to me that we've had good stability. To me, if we could clone Rick, that would be good. I think he, as far as I know, as, as a, as a user of town services, I'm happy that we've had the stability. And I think we need to employ him to find his replacement. And he should start looking now if he's going to not sign another contract in, what, two years' time?
He has one year remaining on his contract.
He's got one year remaining, so he, he, you know, I would start talking to him now about finding his replacement that has all the kinds of qualities that Ken is referring to. Seems to me he does a good job. The staff in the office always seem happy. I haven't heard complaints. And I always get good service, so that's an indication that he seems to be doing okay. And we need, we need a clone.
Deborah?
I agree that Rick Bates does a great job, and I have worked with him on the Technology Committee and before the Technology Committee, and I've worked with him on other, other matters or dealt with him on other matters. And I think that we're lucky to have Rick and somebody of his knowledge and caliber. I do think that, I, I don't want to really think about replacing Rick, but if, if we did, you know, I think that there are a lot of the qualities that Ken mentioned that I would agree with. I, I've supervised people for at least 20 years of my, my career, and I think that, I think that, you know, you really need to have somebody who, who is a good supervisor, but who also, who's a leader and who motivates his staff or her staff. I, I know that one of the things that Rick told me was that in recent hires that they've made at the town, that they've gotten some young people in, and even if they didn't have some experience in a particular area, they really looked at hiring people with the right attitude, the right attitude for, you know, for taking initiative, being motivated. And I think that that's an excellent approach. I think the attitude as a supervisor over the years, I think the attitude is every bit as important as skills. And so you need to have somebody like that who recognizes how to, how to hire and retain and train people, also how to obviously work with the select board, which I, from my observations, I think that, that Rick does that very well. Broad experience is important, organizational abilities, and it's, it's really the things that, the qualities that you look for in a leadership position, because he does lead the town in many ways.
Okay, thanks. Jeff?
When I think about the characteristics of a good town manager anywhere, it's around perspective and that person's ability to be able to see the big picture. As we say, make sure you take care of the forest, not just worry about the individual trees. It's, it's experience, and that experience comes in the areas of HR, you know, capital management, organizational effectiveness, all the good stuff that a good manager does. Working through people, because that's how, in the end, you know, the largest plan I was, the plan manager of, had 1,100 people in it. And you do not make things happen all by yourself. I can guarantee you that. You have to work through people and make sure that they are actively and very well engaged. So working through people is one of those characteristics. Driven for results. You have to have the passion and a high level of it to make things happen. And it means if we've got an objective, we've got to get to an end, and there's gonna be a time when we're gonna get there and land. I would expect a very high level of professionalism and personal ethics in any town manager. And, and these are characteristics of any good manager. It's not so much town government, but any good manager. Being highly transparent so that people understand what's going on and, you know, from day to day, you know, there's, there's nothing being hidden. Actively addressing issues, again, that ties back to being driven for results, you know? And in the end, you have to have a manager that does not create chaos where none exist or otherwise create drama where none should, should be. I mean, you, there is no room for that in any good organization.
Thank you. I have a question of my own. In the last few years, we've had two members of the select board that were asked to run. They won and they were elected, but they did not fulfill their term. So that draws the question in my mind as to the commitment of any individual who wants to serve as a select board member. Obviously, Ken is well aware of what, what it's required. I've always felt that the time that was embellished by select board members over the years to scare others away from serving, I honestly never thought it was that time-consuming. You can put as much into this as you want. So A, are you aware of the time commitments? And B, were you asked to serve by other members of the community, or did you develop a desire to serve on your own? Let's, Jeff, please.
All right. The answer to the last question, I think, is both. You know, you look at what's left on your bucket list and what things have you tackled and what things haven't you tackled in, in life. Public service to this level is something that I have yet to tackle. I've done the private organizations and the industry organizations and all that, but this would be something kind of cool to do. But I was asked by members of the community who've had exposure to some of the things I've done over the last few years to serve. And I answered that calling, as you say, and submitted my, my activity. So I don't give up. You know, are you gonna stay here or not is the question. I don't give up. There will be, you know, this is like sailing across the ocean, right? There are good days when the sun's out and, and everything's good, and then there's bad days when the waves are hitting you in the face and the flying fish are smacking you in the head. Those are, that's just what, what happens. So you get the good times and the bad times to get through it. You have to always keep the, the positive eye out and say, look, you know, I've got empty beer cans on my front lawn because somebody didn't like what I just did at the town meeting, but, you know, they're not shooting at me, so...
It's not quite that bad. Deborah?
I like the saying that if you want to get something done, you ask a busy person. I'm always at my happiest when I'm stressed and busy. That's just the way I'm wired. I remember when I was, when I was running for my last board position where I became chair, I spent two days a week on that business, unfortunately, because of the developer transition that we were talking about. And I remember one of my neighbors asking me, well, do you think you have time to do this? And that was my answer. And of course, I did. I, like Jeff, don't quit. And I had the, the good fortune of being a neighbor of Marge Jones until, until the day she died. And she was quite a woman, and the stories I heard about Marge, I always had it in my head that someday I would probably want to run for select board, but that, you know, that time wasn't, wasn't at that time. I was asked by some folks last year and this year to run. In fact, you might recall that it was reported in the paper erroneously that I was running last year because I took out the papers, but I did not return them because I took a hard look at, at my time commitments and decided that that wasn't the time. And when some of those same people and some others came back and asked me to give it, you know, reconsideration this year, I decided that this is the, the time for me in, in terms of being able to balance it. No, I, 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 I don't, I don't quit. If I, if I make a commitment, I see it through.
Okay. John?
My tenure on the planning board is coming to an end in June, and I have enjoyed contributing more than I thought I would. And I was encouraged, I've been thinking about it, I was encouraged by, oh, well, many, well, maybe one person to run. And then I went to get all the signatures, knocking on friends' doors and neighbors' doors, and they said, oh, thank you for doing that. Yes, here's my signature. They were pleased that somebody is running. And so, and then I spoke to the town manager to find out what's involved. And it is a commitment of ours. I think maybe since you were on the board, things have changed a bit, but there's, I think there's more expectation now to get involved in subcommittees and be liaisons. And you can put a lot of time into it. And I have the time. I don't have another job. I have a business that doesn't take up too much time. And yes, I have the commitment. I'm not running for any other office. This is as far as I go. And it's part of being in the community where I have chosen to live. And as I said before, I'm inspired by the many other people that I've seen volunteer for various roles in the community like Marge and many others. So yes, I'm committed to serve out my term unless, you know, the chairman gets really fed up with me and starts fighting with me. No. Yes.
I'm not gonna ask you this question. Final question, we're right to the end here. What committees would you have interest in serving as liaison to? Go ahead, start, Ken, because you're on some now and...
I'm on some now. In fact, I've, I've been a liaison to the ordinance review committee since I've been on the select board, so I would like to continue with that. I feel that I've developed the knowledge of that and that I can contribute. Ambulance review committee, again, I'm only running for a one-year term. That, that has been a lot of work recently because we've had to rework a contract that has led to a significant increase, so I probably would stay with that. I'm currently liaison to the cemetery committee, and we have some, some work to do there that I would like to continue with. But I think at this point, with, with one year, I would like to continue with the committees that I am currently liaison to, unless another board member has a strong interest, and in that case, I would be happy to, to step aside and, and yield to that.
All right, John?
I'll, I would do wherever, whatever is needed, but I should not be a liaison to the planning board because I need to make a clean break from that and give the new people a chance to, you know, do whatever it is that they're going to do. But other than that, anywhere, any of the committees would be fine. I have an interest in the pathways. I have an interest in, I'm a sailor. I have a boat, so I'm interested in our harbor, although I don't keep my boat there, I keep it in Rockland. So, you know, any, anywhere where I can make a contribution, really.
Okay, Deborah?
I do have an interest in the comprehensive plan committee. I know that Doug is on that and does a great job, but I, you know, would be happy to, to put my two cents in at least. The library committee, I know has, I know the whole library project has been, you know, has, has been a, a challenge for the town. I have quite a bit of construction experience, and so something along those lines might become very valuable at some point. I would certainly like to work with an economic development committee if one gets created.
Okay, Jeff?
Well, I've been on the harbor committee for just over a year now, and I think I'd probably have to fight Doug Cole to me for his role in that as, as a liaison. But that committee has provided an interesting level of activity there. The other one would be the capital committee. I have worked in organizations where we've had to manage capital budgets of over 20 million to 30 million dollars a year, and the ability to identify, select, prioritize, and everything else based on need and criteria as to what monies get spent where in terms of capital improvements is a, is a core competency. So those are the two that, that I have the most interest in.
Okay, great. Okay, great. Well, I think that's the final question. We've run out of time. I'd like to thank Ken McKinley, John Alexander, Deborah Hall, Jeff Hamilton. Voting day is June 12? June 12? Did I get that right?
Yep.
Clerk, clerk is nodding ahead. So we encourage everyone to get out and vote and obviously show up at town meeting the next night. So thank you for coming and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.